Welcome to the March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission. Please join me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, what happened to our flag?
All right. That's on me.
Oh, let me adjust my camera. That, there we go. Now. See the better half of me. Um. Mr. Painter, would you give us a roll call, please?
Chair List.
Here.
Vice Chair Lepper.
Here.
Reappointed member Friend.
Here. Humbly.
Member Nicole Godberg.
Here.
Member Keeney.
Here.
Nicole, I would like to welcome you to our. Group.
Humble.
Wish you a good time of service. With a voice vote. Can we approve tonight's agenda? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Who, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
I think Chris has a little bit of a delay on her sound there.
Oh, okay. Um. Commissioners, please consider the minutes of the February sixteenth meeting. If there are no corrections, is there a motion to approve as published?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 I'm gonna abstain as I was not here at the last meeting.
Okay.
Consent.
Anything to do with the consent calendar for tonight?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
So, um. I assume then, since we've gone through the consent calendar, we technically pulled the items off. And. So I don't know if staff was planning to speak at all to the housing element.
That's actually item number three.
Under consent, yes.
My pardon, I wrote it wrong.
It's okay, no worries.
We are gonna. At least acknowledge that the annual housing element progress report. And Mr. Painter, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
No, I, the commissioner should be familiar with this report. We do it annually at about this time because the report. Completion of the report is required under statutes and. We have to file this to the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Before April one. Each calendar year and the report reflects the activities regarding housing development within the city during the calendar year twenty twenty. So the report is very distilled, so I don't have really have much to gloss over unless you guys have questions, but. Again, the report specifies the number of applications we've received, applications we've issued for building permits. Certificates of occupancy that, which means when a project goes through its entire. Permit and inspection processing. And so a CFO or certificate of occupancy is done at the, at the end, once the final. Inspections are done. So those are listed. There are several tables that this report is required of local governments. Not only does the city, but all cities and counties in the, in California have to prepare this report. So I, I don't doubt that there's some other commission going tonight. It's some other jurisdiction that's probably doing something very similar to what I'm doing right now. So there are tables that describe again our various activities as well as where we are in the status of our housing element programs. And so I provided a summary of, of where we are, the status of those. That really concludes my report. It's all, it's all on the, the three or four pages that I provided for you. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or if the commission wants to add any input that we can. That we can provide to city council, because this is, this ultimately will go in front of the city council likely next week. So I yield the floor.
Commissioner Lepper.
I have one quick question. On the very last page, it talks about total housing applications submitted in the six, which is throughout the report, but then it says total number of proposed units in all applications, five. And I was just wondering where the difference. Where the little one is hanging out then, because there's no disapproved ones. That was just the first time I'd seen a five when I was reading through all the numbers and I wasn't sure where that was auto calculating from or what I was missing there.
Yeah. Uh. Thank you for pointing that out. In fact, we, we actually have corrected that. Unfortunately, the one that went out to you. I, I could go through a story. I've had years of difficulty with completing this form. Not to harp on HCD, they do wonderful work, but they don't provide a very good tool for us to use this spreadsheet format. I found glitches in it and. We found a glitch on one of the line items where a unit would have been counted. What we had to do is white out that row. Actually fill it in lower in the table and so it would auto populate. I apologize, but yes, the numbers are six. We will change that. The one that goes down to the state will, will reflect it, but, but a good eye.
No problem. Thank you.
Excuse me, folks. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh.
Can you see me with the hat on?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm gonna, that's my husband, Brian, and he's helping me. I'm gonna run upstairs and sit in front of that camera.
Okay.
I'm gonna stay for one year.
Mr. Chairman.
Right back.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I had a question for staff.
Just, we got one ahead of you.
Oh, sorry.
Christine, go ahead.
I had a quick question about. In the summary report. Tables G and H about locally owned or controlled lands. We had something come before us about the. County-owned property. So I'm just want to make sure that that doesn't have to be reported since that was, I, I believe we're talking about the old district attorney's. Office and I think the, I can't remember what their most recent use was, but they, they were buildings that were turned over to a historical group. So those don't have to be included in your report because they're not city-owned.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Friend.
Uh, very quickly. I will add something, though. I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. The, the county probably has to disclose that.
Yeah, I figured this on them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But very quickly, Andrew, I'm, from a thirty thousand foot level perspective. How, how, how are we doing overall, meeting our allocations? Or where do you see our, our, our real needs? And our gaps? I, I didn't sense that there was really any, but in terms of. Percent met or something, I, I didn't really find that. I probably didn't drill down the way Commissioner Leopard did.
Yeah, I, I direct you to table B. Table B is a summary of permits issued over the planning period for this housing element cycle, which is cycle five. And so what this table reflects is what income categories for. Residential construction have occurred over these, these current seven years. We still have a little bit to go this year. That will be reported on a year from now. So in summary, what, what you'll see here is we've been, we've done, we've done a very good job of, of moderate and above moderate income housing. But as you can tell, we've had no issue in supermits for lower income. However, as we have brought before you in the past, and I'm, and I believe. The Director Rivas has explained to you, I think in previous meetings, that the city has. Received and we are working with a developer to. Utilize two of the housing opportunity overlay locations that the, the commission and city council. Managed to get through the process and we got it rezoned to the twenty to twenty-four dwelling units per acre. We do expect that those, the construction for those activities will likely come in. Maybe the summer. So. Any reflection of, of those unit counts would not show up in this twenty twenty summary, but would come on and to play. Perhaps in the summary that staff would provide a year from now for twenty twenty-one. So we may have whittled down some of those. Lower income and very low and very low income categories, perhaps as early as the summer with. With, as a middle.
Thank you.
Well, just to clarify, Andrew and Pierre, the city has plenty of parcels or areas zoned to meet our allocation numbers. It's just a matter of finding the right developer to come along and fulfill the. The units that we're responsible for.
Yeah, that, that's correct. Table D. Again, the summary of program implementation of the housing element under. Program one. I've outlined the status of where we are in terms of acreage and parcels to accommodate the various income categories. Yes, and we have adequate inventory to accommodate housing. Throughout the income, household income categories that we're required to respond upon from very low up to. Moderate to above moderate. So we have adequate inventory at this time.
I would, I would think the challenge, I hope, I'm not out of order, Mr. Chairman, but I would, I would think the challenge is, is the economics though, right? I mean. The cost of dirt is high. And, and so if you're gonna, if you gotta pay for the dirt and the cost of construction is high. So I would think that in order for a developer, the incentive for the developer is not necessarily for, for low, very low. Housing, right? I mean, that, that, that's the challenge unless, unless someone's gonna pick up a share of that, of that cost to properly incentivize the developer. I think that's a real challenge, even if we have land that's available for that.
Yes, the Director Rivas can, and I can, can tell you that. Yeah, in many cases, in most cases, in probably most jurisdictions in California. Housing for the below moderate categories typically requires some sort of subsidy and that's, that's what, member Friend, you're, you're alluding to. That those subsidies through grants and other financial means, tax, tax benefit financing, those types of things. Help lower the, the overall cost to, to make the properties affordable so that they can take that raw dirt as you described and then. You know, put rooftops out to serve, to serve those income levels. So yes, typically, low-income housing does require subsidies to, to get it built. That's, that's a general truism.
If I could just add just a brief comment and piggyback on top of what Mr. Painter said. We actually have three affordable housing projects that are in the works. One's known as the Middletown. Affordable Housing Project and the other one is Mallard. Both are being proposed by a private developer. Both will be heavily subsidized by different grant funding. That has been acquired for those projects. We're just waiting for the developer to get the tax credits that he needs in order to move forward. Both of those projects are gonna be about, about eighty units each. They'll be a hundred percent affordable. So I think just those two projects alone will actually provide for the affordable units that we needed in our arena for the next cycle six housing element update. There is a third one you may be aware of, and that's the Placerville Armory. That was identified by the state of California when Governor Newsom issued a executive order directing the Department of General Services to identify all surplus state property. The Placerville Armory is owned by the state, is surplus. And so we have been actually working with the State Department of General Services and Housing and Community Development. To put a affordable housing project on that site. And RFP was submitted, was issued by the state. The closing period on that was March first. And the state did receive two proposals. And so we will be assisting the state in evaluating those proposals and hopefully. We'll have another affordable housing project at the Placerville Armory. For those of you who don't know where that is, it's above Rayleigh's on Armory Drive, sort of across the street from. Where the Placer Village Apartments are and. And as Mr. Friend pointed out. I think what's gonna make that fly is the, the developer will enter into a long-term lease with the state. Essentially, the land is gonna be free. The state will hold title, but then that's a way of making that particular project fly. So. I think the statement by Mr. Friend is absolutely correct. It's, it's the economics and it's gotten more difficult. From what I hear from a lot of people that are in the construction industry is now the cost of construction has gone way up. Some lumber and certain items are up three hundred percent just over the last few years. So it makes it very, very difficult. So it does take a lot of outside funding to make these type of projects move forward.
Okay, anything else? All right. We are moving on. Items of interest to the public that are not on the agenda. At this time, members of the public may bring, bring before the planning commission items that are not on the agenda. We ask that your comments be held to three minutes or less and we will time that. And please remember that the commissioners will not respond to your item tonight or be able to take action. Do we have anyone in the public? Mr. Rivas.
We have. Let's see. Two participants have raised their hand, but I'm trying to see who has raised their hand. Not.
Well, that's, may I raise a, may I raise a point of order while Pierre is working through that? So, Mr. Chairman. On this, on this platform that we're using. And this will be a kind of a question to staff. There's a Q and A available to us. And my question is. I, I see the question. And are we allowed to respond to those or should we not?
No, we're, we're not doing Q and A. It's my apologies. I had forgotten to turn the Q and A off for this meeting. What I'm trying to do is pull up a screen. Normally I have the ability to see who are the participants that wish to speak. It was telling me I had two people wishing to speak, but I'm not seeing.
Yeah, I, I'm seeing it Director Rivas.
You see it?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't, I don't have it on my screen. If you could take care of that.
Yeah, Chair List, Jen C would like to speak. Go ahead, Jen.
Hi there. Probably the confusion about two people is probably me because I have a computer and my phone for audio, so I wasn't sure which. You were gonna see the hand, but I just wanted to. This is mostly comment, I guess, just, you know, I mentioned it during the interview process about the Historical Advisory Committee and just reminding the planning commissioners. You know, that, that they are actually tasked with the duties of that committee that, of course, was suspended. And so. I just thought I would read this because I think it's good for everybody to remember. Let's see, the, I guess I'm just gonna start with the duties and see if I have time for purpose. You know, as specified per City Council Resolution seventy-nine, seventy-eight ninety-six, the duties of the Historical Advisory Committee are the preservation of historic resources. Including buildings, structures, objects, monuments, and markers as our legacy to the future generations. Act in an advisory capacity to the planning commission and city council in all matters pertaining to historical resources and districts. Review applications to alter facades visible from a public right-of-way or to demolish all or part of any structure which is listed on an inventory of historic building structures, site, or resource. The committee shall advise and make recommendations to the planning commission with respect to discretionary permit requests within three hundred feet. Of historic resources and shall advise the commission on appropriate means to maintain the integrity of the historic resources. The committee shall make recommendations to the planning commission with respect to such applications within ten days of the committee meeting scheduled to hear such requests. In the event that the committee fails to assemble a quorum or make a recommendation to the planning commission within ten days. Of receipt or consideration on the resources, the matter shall be forwarded to the planning commission without a recommendation from the committee. Maintain a local inventory of historic resources within the city as established by the city council. Make recommendations to update the inventory. Investigate and report to city council on various federal, state, local, and private funding sources and mechanisms available to promote historical preservation. Make recommendations to the planning commission and city council on amendments to natural, cultural, and scenic resources elements of the city's general plan. Advise city council and city boards and commissions as necessary on historic preservation issues. Provide advice and guidance upon the rec. Request of property owners or occupant on the restoration, alteration, decoration, landscaping, or maintenance of any historical resource or property within the historic district. Or within historic district. Anyway, so thank you for letting me just read that. I think it's really just powerful that we actually, you know, had all of that spelled out and it does now rest with this commission and congratulations to everybody and thank you all for your service.
Okay, anyone else?
Chair List, I see Ruth. Ruth has her hand up. Go ahead, Ruth.
Thank you. Yeah, no, it's just a little bit of a delay for it to come up on my screen, but thank you. Um. So I, I signed on a little bit, um, late tonight at six fifteen and I. Just wanna ask a question and then I do have a comment to make for a general comment. So on the consent calendar, there's not opportunity after the fact. The comment has to be made ahead of time. Is that true? There's no open to public comment after you discussed your consent calendar for any comments from the public? Okay, I guess you'll answer that later. And I, I just wanted to confirm sort of what Jennifer had said in a way. I'm so sorry that we no longer have a historical advisory committee. I know that it was disbanded in twenty fifteen, apparently for lack of interest, but I think it's. Really many hats for you to wear to do all the very many tasks that you have to do and decisions you have to make. And in addition to that, be. Cognizant and aware and familiar and educated with all of these historical issues. And I know in this last year. Several issues came before you that were, to my mind, to my way of thinking, rather difficult. And every opportunity I have to say that I'd really like for us to reinstate the Historical Advisory. Commission. I know that's not under your purview and it's not for you to decide, but I just think it would be very helpful for them to be able to review and to advise you. And to work in concert with you. So. I would hope that would reappear at some time and lessen your load a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not seeing any others raising their hands. No.
Okay. This time, were there any communications from staff or? From commissioners? That we need to be made aware of? Any communications?
None from staff other than the agenda packet that was provided to. Uh, member, excuse me, Director Rivas, do you have any additional information?
Uh, no, I don't. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four, site plan review SPR twenty-one dash oh one. Bourbon at eight two-two Spring Street or, yeah, Spring Street, Placerville. Mr. Painter, do we have a staff report?
Yes, I do. The item for tonight, the subject site location is a zero point one-two acre parcel. It's approximately a hundred heat southwesterly of the intersection of Spring and Coloma Streets. The parcel contains two residences with the addresses of eight twenty and eight twenty-two Spring. Uh, Spring Street also at this location is also known as State Route forty-nine. This parcel and the immediate neighborhood make up the Coloma Spring Streets Historic, Historic Residential District. The district contains primary, primarily single-family homes, but does contain also a few properties like the subject site with more than one dwelling unit or, or, and/or accessory dwelling. The property owner and applicant, Matt Barber, seeks planning commission consideration and approval for alter, alterations, modifications that have been completed. Those modifications are visible from the street. They are on the eight twenty-two Spring Street home. Attachment A of the applicant's supplemental package can, can consist of the request application, photos of the completed sighting. As well as work and on the garage door, the roof modifications. It was also included a, a letter and exhibits of other structures within, within the city that supports the request. The alterations that have been completed include the installation of board and baton siding along the entire front elevation over the existing horizontal lap site. The exception is the front gable where shingle-like siding was placed above the eaves up to the roof ridge. Installation of the board bat siding up to the eaves along the south elevation of the home and the north elevation of the attached garage. Excepting the horizontal lap siding remains above the eaves up to the roof along both the north and south elevation. A four-panel overhead garage door with recessed finish and square windows replaced the existing garage door. And the home has been re-roofed with composition roof singles, shingles replacing light materials. The request is before the commission due to a code compliance action against the property owner due to work completed without the required building permits on both subject site residences. And because this work involved alterations visible from the street of the exterior of the eight twenty-two Spring Street residence. On a parcel within the aforementioned Coloma Spring Streets Historic Residential District. Which is a violation of city code sections ten four nine and ten four ten. Which require approval of site plan review application by the planning commission before a construction permit may be issued. The planning commission's authority tonight is to consider the request. And the authority is granted under the Placerville zoning code ten three one. And also under the zoning code site plan review and historic buildings in the city regulations, which are sections ten four nine and ten four ten of city code. On pages three, five, three, four, five, and six of the staff report, staff describes the site. And the eight twenty-two Spring Street residents prior to the completed alterations. Along with applicable and relevant and pertinent general plan goals and policies. Zoning code regulations, including the compliance design criteria for work within city historic districts. This design criteria is known as the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings. And also mentioned is guidelines in the development code that, that address historic. Buildings and historic districts. These address specifically alteration work within city historic districts, as I just said, and served as a basis for staff's analysis, along with an archival photo of the residence. Provided in the report. Under the, I'm gonna abbreviate the Secretary of Interior Standards. From now on in my, my, my oral discussion here as the SOI standards and guidelines, it's just simpler to say. The first step in reviewing a rehabilitation activity such as what was done here is to identify the form. Architectural materials and features such as masonry. identify the form, architectural materials and features such as masonry, wood, and metal, along with exterior features such as roofs, porches, and windows that define a building's character. Under the SOI standards and guidelines, these features must be retained in order to preserve their defining character. Staff's opinion is that prior to the alteration of the residence building, prior to the alteration, the residence building form and detailing features that give the building its historic visual character is its simple gabled architecture, the wood horizontal lap siding that envelops the home, the divided light windows with wood window trim, and the wood garage door. The completed siding and garage door material alterations do not retain the visual appearance, features, and materials to make up the historic character of the home. These material changes are not replacements in kind of the existing exterior material features. Therefore, the completed work is inconsistent with the SOI standards numbers two, three, six, and nine, and also is inconsistent with the SOI guidelines for wood exterior materials that call for preserving and repairing character-defining features and materials. This request is therefore inconsistent as presented with historical criteria under Placerville Zoning Code ten four ten B. The completed alteration work is also not consistent with the community design element goal C in policy six, as well as goal I in policy three within the community design element, also is inconsistent with guideline four C three B of the Development Guide as this work does not maintain or restore character-defining features of the home that this home has had for approximately eighty years. The SOI guidelines do recommend that the repairing of or replacement of in-kind materials. This type of activity would be exempt from site plan review, but would require obtaining a construction permit through the city. The re-roofing work both on eight twenty-two Spring and eight twenty Spring Street is exempt from site plan review due to the like-kind replacement, but that activity is subject to a construction permit from the Development Services Department. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, this request was noticed in accordance with the city's legal requirements and no public comments have yet been received. Staff recommends the commission make the findings and take the action on pages seven and eight of the staff report to deny the request because the modifications made are not recommended under the SOI standards and guidelines, are inconsistent with the goals and policies within the general plan, and are inconsistent with the guidelines within the Development Guide. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my staff report. I see the applicant is in the audience this evening.
Okay, are there any questions from commissioners to staff? Can we pull back out to the other screen, please?
Oh, sorry.
Any commissioners have a question of the staff? Wow, okay. May we hear from the applicant or a representative? That would be Mr. Barber?
Yes, that's me.
Go ahead.
Thinking in a easiest way to solve this problem was cancel the application and we've discussed the remedies to fix this. Have the other contractor remove sightings there and the original sighting is still underneath that sighting that was installed. I mean, I believe we have an action plan to remove, put it back to its original condition and we're permitting the roof separately and be able to put everything back to where it was. Probably take us a brief fix.
Okay, commissioners may have some questions for you. I would like to start that tonight. How long have you owned the property?
Roughly two years.
I'm sorry?
Two years.
Okay. Was the roof that was covered over, was that the original roof on the house or do you know?
I don't, well, the house was built in thirties, so I highly doubt it was original. It was composition.
The composition was probably wasn't that old.
We would assume it was twenties.
Okay. The, do we know what the original roofing material was on the house? Do you have any idea? Okay, any attic, did you look up? Did it have space sheeting or was it solid sheeting?
Solid sheeting.
Okay. Windows, are the windows and the trim original to the house?
No, they are a vinyl frame dual pane. Looks like they were probably replaced ten to fifteen years ago.
Okay. Did you remove the siding or was it someone that you hired?
Someone that we hired, the siding wasn't removed. There was just a layer of siding installed over the top.
Okay, so what I'm shooting for is, do we know for sure that the original house built in the nineteen thirties had lap siding? There
We don't.
We have no way to tell on that.
Yeah. I asked the museum if they had photos for this particular property. They could not provide any.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have for the moment. Does anyone else like to ask some questions?
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Barber. So are you saying that you don't want to proceed or your plan is to remove the siding, get all the permits that you are supposed to get and that's
I mean, I would obviously like to get it approved and permitted and it aesthetically looks, it's a little bit cleaner and still has, you know, go to it. Of course, that's my that would be my number one goal, but the consensus is it's not going to get approved based on guidelines. Rather than be a problem or paperwork on your guys' desk, if it's going to end with a no, I might as well be proactive and just remedy it back to the issue of origin. It was a project that I had hired, a lesson learned for, I can tell you, do your homework on a contractor and also don't give the money for it.
You provided us a picture of five thirty-five Main Street. Do you know, is that a residence or a business?
Five thirty-five Main Street.
Yeah, it's one of the pictures that you provided.
That is Bob Bell's building, which is a, it's a commercial building, but it's an office building right across the street from District Attorney's old office.
Okay. I'd just like to point out that within the last two years, we have approved a residence of a house on Highway forty-nine just south of downtown Sacramento Hill area with batt, reverse batt and board materials. And that in, on page four at the top says repair or replace with in-kind materials of an existing lap siding garage door they have deteriorated is encouraged under the guidelines. It doesn't say it's mandatory, it says it's encouraged. Any other commissioners like to ask the applicant a question?
Yeah, a comment?
Yes.
The reasoning we did an overlay was this home was built without a sheeting behind the lap siding. There's no insulation and it is a plaster and last year walls and he, there was a tree, it was a very large tree in front of the building that had a root that cracked the foundation. And we had an engineer look and there's no shear value to one side of the house, but by adding this siding, it gave the structure shear value and it also insulated and air sealed the envelope of the home. So it was a process that our contractor talked us into. That's kind of how it got sold on product. That's how we ended up with board and battening decision.
And he said it added shear value even though you put it over the lap siding?
Correct.
Wow, that's interesting.
Yeah, but that's coming from, coming from a gentleman that didn't finish the job, didn't permit it, you know, all this, so that's just if there's any truth to that, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, Mr. Barber, I actually don't have a question. I guess I'm just going to make a comment. I'm really appreciative that you're going to go in the direction that you're going, particularly in the circumstances that you've gone through already. You raised a number of interesting points, I think even the chair raised a point, we don't know what this home had originally, you know, which kind of makes it difficult to establish a point of reference from a historical aspect. And I also noted in your application that this house is not, this house is in the historic district. It has some historic character in and of its own. I mean, it just does even with the board and battening in my view and not necessarily of any, any particular historic significance aside of the fact when it was constructed, really at the end of the day, it seems that it's heritage or what it brings to the table is when it was constructed. This is something that we as planning commissioners are going to have to discuss separately, but I want to thank you for your willingness to do what you're planning to do. And just clarification from staff. If the applicant is withdrawing the application, number one, there would be no action required of us. I want to make sure I understand that. And then in terms of what he needs to do and permit-wise, can you just restate that for me, Andrew? What he would need to do then to make this right? He's, the roof is allowed if it gets permitted, right? I think I heard that's correct. And then a removal, he probably needs a permit to remove the board and battening they put up. If you could just speak to that, Andrew, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, well, categorically, the roof, the re-roofing of both residential structures requires a building permit, but from city's perspective, since it's like-kind materials, composition shingles to composition shingles does not require planning commission consideration or review. We typically do that ministerially because as pointed out earlier by the chair and other members, that, yeah, the original roof, probably a shake, probably a wood shake back in the thirties, was probably long since replaced. So the, the work that was completed for the siding, the city will require a building permit, construction permit to undo that work so that we can inspect the work and to make sure that the home is brought back to its appearance prior to the alterations that were done. You know, technically, the garage door would work the same way, so does that answer your question, member friend? But bringing it back to the appearance prior to the alterations would not require the planning commission to approve those changes. Because he's bringing it back to its original appearance or at least the appearance prior to the alteration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
The his I owned a property on Bedford with apartment buildings there. Those were on the historical inventory list, which in my opinion is very far down. This home not being on the inventory list, being built in the thirties, from a planning commission standpoint, we want to preserve a home that is the style of the thirties, is that our goal? That construction style next to, it's sandwiched right between houses that were built in the eighteen hundreds that are on. And that, if I understand right, keeping it of its vintage in the thirties. That's going back to, put it back to the siding. Make it look just like the consistency of that neighborhood now by with the batt and board actually makes it fit in more with its neighbors.
Staff want to respond to anything you said?
Well, the commission has the authority to make a determination as to what is the historic character of this home. That is your responsibility. Staff provided its assessment of what it believes are the outwardly historic character of the home. And the guidelines and standards are as stated. I will remind the commission that there is a code section under ten four ten, which does require, and I'll quote it to you, it's subsection F. All buildings which shall be hereafter constructed or altered as to their exterior appearance within the historic districts described in subsection ten four ten C, which are the city historic districts, shall as to the exterior architecture visible from the street, they must conform to the historical criteria described in subsection ten four ten B. Ten four ten B are the Secretary of Interior Standards and guidelines.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So may I suggest, first of all, in light of the fact that the applicant has indicated that essentially they're going to withdraw the application and restore the exterior appearance to what it would meet, I think, would meet the guidelines from what I understand. And the public hearing is open, barring any other questions to the applicant. See if there's anyone else that wishes to speak on this and then I think bring it back to us for action.
All right. Is there anyone in the public would like to speak on this item?
Mr. Chairman, Jennifer Chapman wishes to speak.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Oh, I am unmuted. Well, I just want to say, I mean, you know, thank you to everyone for, you know, just, I think you know, just, I think really giving this, you know, some serious consideration. And I just want to emphasize, you know, that part about that there are resources out there to help support. You know, I, I know there are certain kinds of funds and I know there are also certain kinds of flexibilities with that historic building code. And so, you know, I hope that if, you know, if this does result in withdrawing and, and pursuing this other path, I hope it becomes, you know, maybe a, you know, a great case study for, you know, for others to learn about processes and opportunities. And I just, you know, I, I, you know, this is a heart, you know, this is a very hardcore part of the historic area of town and obviously highway forty nine. I mean, you know, it, it, it's just, you know, right, right along the, the key corridor. So I, I just want to say thank you, everyone. And you know, I just, I hope that we can help support, you know, an owner taking this kind of direction. So thanks.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, we have a Danielle Slater, which is to speak.
Danielle, go ahead.
Thank you. I didn't raise my hand, but thank you.
Go ahead.
Oh, I didn't raise my hand. Thank you, though.
Oh, okay.
I appreciate being included. I'm good.
All right. Is there anyone else?
Ruth has raised her hand to speak.
Again, no, I'm, I'm sorry. Something's wrong with your system. I did not raise my hand.
Yeah, your hand is still up, so on my screen, sorry.
I think maybe it was, I think it was left over from before.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, no more raised hands.
All right. Now I'm gonna close the public hearing portion and we'll bring it back to commissioners. Any comments, your questions from commissioners?
So, Mr. Chairman, there's no action at this point because I think the application's being withdrawn. So which case the staff, the city would have no, no need to, to pursue. The one question I have for staff, if, if I might, and call me out of order if I am. Andrew, if assuming somebody comes to pull a permit to do work on a home in a historic district, they come in to get the permit, construction permit. Are, are they advised at that time that their, their, the work that they're proposing is within the historic district and therefore they need to be aware of and are pointed to the S O I?
Yes, the, our, our building staff who are the ones who initiate, they're usually the first line staff employees who interact with the public are Lynn and or Eris of our building, building staff. What they do is they facilitate an idea where this location is, where, 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 where is the property? That's the first question we ask, because sometimes people confuse our office with the Eldorado County's planning services. So that's the first question. With the second question is if it's truly in the city and they provide us an address, then we ask them, what, what is the activity? What, what is the scope of work? The counterstaff will then locate in our address books what, what the zoning is. And we have it's keyed, the zoning has H C D or, excuse me, a C B D or R one ten. And if it's in a historic district, it's also labeled with an H, which gives staff an indication that it's, it's in a historic district. And so therefore the activities may involve the planning department in terms of its review because of if it involves exterior, exterior alterations, then we would evaluate that scope of work either over the counter or through a plan check process. So yes, there is, there is a mechanism in which we, we try to catch when an application gets submitted to ferret out what, what the responsibilities are of that applicant, if those activities involve or would require a planning commission review and approval. In this particular case, obviously the work was done without, without a construction permit. And we are here, as I mentioned, under a code compliance case.
If I may add, Mr. Chairman, when we receive a building permit application, there's actually a section on the applications is filled out by staff. So staff verifies the zoning district the property is located in and whether or not it's located within an historic district. And that would be checked right on the building permit application.
Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chairman? I do have one question for Mr. Barber. It just came up. And, Mr. Barber, I do want to, I meant to ask this. I do want to ask why you proceeded without first getting a permit.
And my business life, I have business with approximately fifty employees and about eighteen properties. I have my family, my dad, my wife and property management company. That helps. You're planning on selling properties to move money for my business. I heard with this COVID, the demand for contractors has spiked. I'm, I'm not a construction manager. Put it to death in my office. Found a guy, trusted him, did work sight unseen. That, you know, the good salesman and literally stole our money. We are now actively seeking litigation against and representatives. So it's a, ultimately, it's my responsibility. I take full accountability for this.
So, so your audio, I, I don't mean to talk over it. Your audio, at least on my end, is, is really intermittent. Is, is it safe to say that basically you handed this off to somebody and expected them to do it properly and they didn't do it? Is that really what happened?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that, that's all I need. That's all I needed to hear.
Yeah.
Put you on the spot like that, but it occurred to me, right, we had, because that was back to my question to staff. Well, when somebody pulls a permit, aren't they told this kind of stuff? So. Okay.
Yeah, that's all I, thank. I trust, I trusted you fellow. My, my, my dad worked with the guy before. It just really unfortunate. And I would like each and every one of you to know that I'm gonna remedy it and make it right. And this is not how I do business. So.
Great. It all makes sense now. Thank you.
Okay.
Michael, I think you shared your screen. And we're all.
Thank you. I thought I was having computer issues.
Also, Chair List, I, I do have, I do want to, want to respond to something you said earlier. And I know the project you were referring to in the south part of the city off of Sacramento Street or Highway forty nine. Actually, no action was taken on the siding. I went back and looked at the minutes. That was actually just as COVID was starting. That was, I think that was the last meeting we had live together out in at Town Hall. And so, yeah, that item was continued. So the siding, the board and batten siding was technically not approved by the commission. For the record.
My mistake. I, I remember the, I remember it coming up and, and I thought it was approved. So.
Yeah, that was her intent. And we're waiting for her to come back with some revisions. So it, it's technically tabled.
Okay. Because we are not going to have a motion on that one, we are going to move on to item number five, zoning interpretation, Z O N twenty one dash oh one, Central Business District Zone at three twenty eight Main Street. The Blue Bell Building LLC, Mr. Painter, do we have a staff report?
Mr. Chairman, Director Rebus will be providing the staff report tonight on the site.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Painter. Yes, what, what's being asked of the, of the planning commission tonight is a request by the property owner of the, what's known as the Blue Bell Building as an address of three twenty six, three twenty eight and three thirty three Main Street. And if the planning commission consider a zoning interpretation to allow for a transient short-term rental within the Central Business District or C B D. A lodging facility serves guests for temporary stays up to thirty days or fewer consecutive nights. That's what we call an itinerant type of lodging facility, in this case, vacation rental. The retail store there is known as the Bookery and it's on the ground level floor. And the upstairs contains two units, a studio apartment and a two-bedroom apartment. The applicant proposes to use the existing second floor studio apartment, which has an address of three twenty eight Main Street, and it comprises approximately two hundred and twenty-five square feet of floor area within the second level of the Boo, Blue Bell Building. To rent it out is a transient, short-term rental, also known as a vacation rental. Short-term, with regards to short-term rental regulations, the city currently does not permit them. Primarily, we don't allow them at all in any residential zone due to nuisance complaints from neighbors and from other interested parties regarding short-term rentals since two thousand and thirteen. The city's concerns about the potential loss of affordable housing. And as such, then in two thousand and seventeen, staff requested and received a city council authorization by resolution to initiate amendments of the zoning ordinance regarding defining a definitions of lodging facilities and the regulation of short-term rentals. This work has not yet been completed. The Central Business District does allow for hotels and motels, which are defined as containing six or more rental units. There is not a provision for lodging facilities currently to address under the six units. Since a vacation rental is considered a lodging facility and a commercial use, staff is suggesting that in the interim, until an ordinance governing vacation rentals makes its way through the planning process, that a temporary use permit process will serve as a regulatory vehicle for this particular rental at this time. Under a temporary use permit, staff would condition the use to meet minimum city standards. And these would include requirements such as parking requirements, obtaining a business license, payment of transient occupancy taxes and the like. And the T V T U P would be good for one year and is subject to, to a renewal, annual renewal. Per the temporary use permit provisions, the planning commission may by resolution deem the use to be within the intent and purpose of the section of the temporary use permits, which are required for the proper functioning of the community or are temporarily required in the process of establishing a permitted use or constructing a public facility. So establishing a short-term rental use for transient accommodation within the C B D would be similar to a hotel or motel as defined by the zoning ordinance and is similar to a transient nature of an accommodation provided in a hotel or motel use, but at a, at a much reduced unit scale. This, in this case, it'd be one unit. So the commission basically has two options at this point. Should the commission find that under the code section ten dash three dash one E, a short-term rental uses are similar or accessory to the specified uses allowed by right or by use permit within the Central Business District and are subject to parking requirements or finding that the requested, requested use is temporarily required in the process of establishing a permitted use subject to the special use permit process. Under city code ten dash four dash seven, staff recommends that by motion, the commission could make this finding directing the staff to return with a draft resolution for consideration and possible adoption. Therefore, allowing for staff to administratively process the applicant's application to establish a vacation rental. And the second option would be, should the commission find that under the code section ten dash three dash one E, that the short-term rentals are not a use similar or et cetera, accessory to uses within the Central Business District Zone, or that the request does not meet the purpose and intent of section ten dash four dash seven A, then the commission could make a finding that the requested use is not temporarily required in the process of establishing a permitted use. And for this action, a minute or is sufficient and the adoption of a resolution would not be required. So that concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Are there any questions of staff?
I have a question. So when we, we just talked about now they're being outlawed right now as of the two thousand and seventeen discussion. How does this play into the larger rental, short-term rental conversations for the entire county? Are we kind of? Because I was doing some research, because I know South Lake Tahoe has dealt with this and Truckee and things like that. And I just was wondering kind of where we play into that or kind of are we on our own in, in regulating that within the city limits?
Yes, we are an autonomous, self-regulating jurisdiction with the ability to regulate, administer, modify our zoning ordinance as the city sees fit. If that answers your, your, your question on that.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if we're under any larger vacation home regulations within the county, or if that has come down in any way. Not come down, but sort of will impact any decisions we make or it's, it's just completely autonomous, I guess.
We are completely autonomous. The county's regulations regarding vacation rentals, and particularly in Tahoe Basin is where most of those issues are concerned, would be strictly under the city of South Lake Tahoe within their corporate boundaries or in the unincorporated areas within Eldorado County would be strictly under the zoning ordinance of Eldorado County. So the city is being an incorporated city is responsible for regulating its own land uses within its borders.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gutt?
Yeah, so I had a question. Would a mixed-use building that included a hotel and a retail establishment and an apartment be allowed by right if it met the six units on the hotel portion?
That's a very good question. Under, under a lot of, a lot of new regulation has come out through the state in regards to what we call A D U's or accessory dwelling units. And if we create an accessory dwelling unit, then as part of the permitting process, that dwelling unit must be to provide for additional housing and not lodging. So in that scenario you just described, that A D U would be restricted to long-term rental only. Staff is in a, we're, we're contemplating when we go back to, in fact, any, I just want to let the commission know that any changes to our zoning code in regards to vacation rentals will, will become before your body for recommendation to the city council. Staff is contemplating allowing for the vacation rentals to be established in, in any commercial zone. We do have situations where there are existing homes that are within, within a piece of property that may have been rezoned from residential to commercial, and it would seem appropriate that that be allowed then for lodging facilities. But in the case of residential, the city is contemplating not permitting any vacation rentals within a single family or residentially zoned properties, since residentially zoned properties are very important for the city in meeting its fair share of housing needs and not turning any of those into then lodging facilities.
And then I just had, I had a second question related to the comment on no short-term rentals are allowed. Are owner-occupied buildings allowed to rent rooms within their, where they live?
We do have a section in our zoning code in our residential zones where it basically says that the renting of one room is permitted. So if we have a situation where the home is owner-occupied and they wish to rent out one of their rooms, we do not differentiate between short and long term. And also I would just add, we would not be losing a residential dwelling unit. We are currently not meeting our ability to provide for housing. Housing is an extremely short supply. It's probably the reason why during this housing boom, the price of homes, existing homes within the city of Placerville has gone up thirty-six percent in one year.
That's all my questions right now.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Pierre, I just want to make sure I understand in the very last paragraph, that last, second to last sentence where it says that the requested use is not temporarily required in the process of establishing a permitted use. Just to make sure I understand this. The staff is going to draft zoning code, zoning code, zoning ordinance language that addresses this. And the question before us is whether or not in the meantime, we need to take any special action to allow the requested use, right? And specifically with the sentence that you just asked, if we think that, no, the applicant doesn't need to come to us for this because of how they're planning to do it and what the city's going to do, we don't have to worry about it. Is that really what this says?
I think what it's trying to say is, the city council has authorized staff to develop regulations regarding vacation rentals, which we currently do not have. And so we foresee allowing them in the commercial zones. So since in the commercial zones allow hotels and motels, really the only difference is size and scope. Hotels and motels are six units or more. And this applicant only wants to rent out on a short-term basis, a studio apartment. So we see that as something that is very similar in nature to a hotel and motel, albeit to smaller scale. So therefore, in the interim, we wish to allow this use to go forward under the temporary use provisions that we have. And the county and the planning commission has the ability to make the finding to allow vacation rentals be added to our temporary use, to uses allowed under temporary use permit in the CBD zone.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Now we'll go and hear from the applicant. Ms. Lux, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, I'm here. I'm a little not computer savvy, so I'm assuming everyone can hear. I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea for downtown. It will bring somebody to come in, visit, see, shop, eat, enjoy downtown. We have made provision for parking. Off-street, we rent a couple of, we rent one unit from the city and one, two parking spaces from Dano Raffetto. I think this would be good for everybody. And I'm here to answer questions or address objections as anybody might have. And the reason I appear twice is because my business partner Nancy is downstairs on a different computer. And we're both signed in. There's one of me on visual and Nancy is, the computer downstairs doesn't have a camera.
Okay. Hey, commissioners, have a question of the applicant.
Yeah, has the studio apartment previously been rented out to a long-term tenant?
Occasionally, generally speaking, the tenants have not stayed a really long time. Nancy did live there actually for a year or so, but other than that, you know, it's.
For years, for years, it's been our office and storage for books.
Yeah.
Okay. And is the, is the two-bedroom apartment rented out to a tenant or is it?
It is not currently. It is not currently.
Christian, are you intending just to do the short-term rental on the studio or on both units?
Just on the studio.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have one question. I'm looking at the copy of the print you sent us of the building. And it shows that in the corner, there is a five-foot by five-foot. And it's listed as a WC, water closet. It's showing the sink and a toilet. Or is there no shower or bathroom?
There is a shower.
Within that five by five?
Yeah.
Wow, okay. That's a new one on me. That's pretty small.
Isn't it bigger? I think it's bigger than five by five, isn't it? You want me to run up who measured?
According to the drawing, it's five by five.
He has the blueprint, Nancy.
Oh, well, then it's five by five. It seems bigger than that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Is there anyone in the public would like to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman, we have Ruth wishes to speak.
Okay, Ruth, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm very much in support of this. I'm a merchant as well and just a few doors down. From Nancy and Celia, my husband and I own an art gallery on Main Street. And I think this is an excellent use of this space. And I think in Nevada City and how well they've done there with having so many of their second stories being either bed and breakfasts, hotels, et cetera. And it really, in Nevada City, it's brought so many. You know, when people stay right downtown, of course, they'll go to the restaurants and they'll do their shopping. And Nevada City also has their theater, their live theater for plays and such downtown, which is really great and nice if we could bring that back too as well sometime. So anyway, I'm just a strong supporter. You know, the only small concern, I know we have a shortage of housing, but it doesn't sound like, for whatever reasons, people long-term want to stay in this two-hundred square foot. It's probably, you know, think about it, two hundred square feet is about what, ten by twenty, not very big. I mean, I'd be fine for short-term. It's probably a little cramped for a longer-term situation. So I think it's, you know, it's like the size of a nice hotel room. So it just seems perfect to me. And again, I am a strong supporter. Good idea, Nancy and Celia. Good idea. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No one else to speak, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll close the public hearing portion, bringing it back to commissioners. Comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to move that the commission find that a requested use is not temporarily temporarily required in the process of establishing this permitted use.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Can you repeat that motion, Mike? I'm sorry, I get cut out in part of it.
So basically, my motion is the language in the staff report that the commission is making, the commission makes a finding that the requested use is not temporarily required in the process of establishing a permitted use. Thereby, we can resolve this by minute order.
I will second that motion.
And then for discussion, my rationale on this is the staff is in fact going to go ahead and develop the appropriate zoning regulations to address this. And I support this type of use in a CBD. It makes sense to me. And so I see no harm in allowing the applicant to move forward with this. That's my rationale.
Any other comments or questions?
Staff requests clarification on that motion. Basically, the two, the two options that staff provided the planning commission was, one, you can find that then it's not a similar use, that it's inappropriate. Therefore, you would make that motion by minute order. The other option is, should you find that it is appropriate, then we're requesting that the commission direct staff to come back with a resolution with the findings that is appropriate. We would then approve the use under a temporary use permit until such time as the former regulations are problemated by the city. And then they would fall under those regulations. There is not the ability just to approve it. That's not before you.
I'm sorry, then that was kind of my question back to you earlier, Pierre.
Yeah, my apologies.
My apologies for misunderstanding.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then I'm going to withdraw my motion because it's not the correct motion. I would probably have to formulate a new motion. And that motion would be that I guess I would move that we can find that under zoning code ten dash three dash one E, short-term rental uses are similar or accessory to the specific use as applies in this case. And the commission is directing staff to return with a draft resolution for consideration and possible adoption. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
And then I have a question. In the interim, Pierre, is the applicant allowed to move forward with this? Or do they have to wait for staff to return with a draft resolution?
Yes, the applicant will have to wait until staff returns with a draft resolution.
There's nothing they can do in the meantime. There's no. Okay, all right. I'm sorry to the applicant for that. I was hoping we're going to be able to allow them to do it while the likely ordinance was developed. So, all right, that's my motion.
May I interject? Am I allowed to speak?
Go ahead.
Just my understanding and I may not have read this right, that you could disapprove me by minute order? Or I heard that there could be a temporary use permit given pending that zoning ordinance write-up. Am I incorrect?
Mr. Chairman, if I could answer then Celia's question. Yeah, basically what we're, what we're trying to do is we have right now the vacation, short-term vacation rentals are not permitted. So the way to remedy that in the interim, until we have draft regulations regulating vacation rentals, we're looking at allowing them under a temporary use permit application. So the planning commission has to adopt a resolution then allowing that. We didn't know which direction the commission was going to go, so we had the two options. Either they weren't going to allow it at all or, you know, I understand from the commission that they agree with staff that it is an appropriate and similar use in the central business district. They're directing staff to come back with a resolution. We will bring it back at the next meeting. They will adopt it. Then we can allow it under a temporary use permit application. You would be able to submit your application at that time. And that's a, that's a quick turnaround. We'll be able to turn that around very quickly because it's at the staff levels administrative at that point.
Okay, well, I just have to say thank you to everybody who has been so supportive. Thank you, Ruth. Thank you to everybody at the city hall who's been so, so helpful. Everybody's been wonderful. The wheels of progress turn a little more slowly than we'd like, but and I'm happy to show anybody the room. I didn't take the measurements. I took in a set of blueprints and if Mr. List would like to come, I'd love to show it to him.
All right.
Take a shower.
We have a motion and a second.
So I would, I would just like to say, you know, I do think at two-hundred and twenty-five square feet, that's probably the best use of this property that doesn't really allow itself for a long-term conducive living. Typical hotel rooms are about two-hundred to three-hundred and fifty square feet. The room I'm sitting in right now is like three-hundred and fifty square feet. And I look around and I can't imagine somebody wanting to live in a space like this, you know, as a permanent living situation. So I do think it's a good use. I would like to see the temporary use permit go into effect.
All right, Mr. Fainer, would you call the roll?
Yeah, I will do that. Before I, before I do so, I want to make sure everyone is clear that the direction by the commission to staff to prepare a resolution, once again, has to do with the CBD only. CBD zone does not apply to any other zone within the city. So I just want to make sure that that's clarified. Any questions?
I'm clear on that. The maker of the motion is clear on that.
Just to follow up, there's not going to be any sort of like cap or anything like that on the number when in the CBD. It could be like there's fifteen to twenty units. They could all fifteen to twenty turn into Airbnbs under the resolution.
I would think so.
I would just add, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that a temporary use permit application is reviewed and approved on a case-by-case basis. So it's really hard to judge, but as it was clarified, we would accept a TUP from point forward that the commission adopts that resolution within any application in the central business district. So when we get in, when we really get into the weeds and we examine the pros and cons of doing these, then we will look at situations where, for example, if we had a mixed-use development where there was basically an apartment on the second or third floors of some future building, there may be restrictions that the code would place on that kind of a situation. So, you know, is it really a hotel as opposed to vacation rentals, that kind of thing? It really would, it would really operate more as hotel if it was six or more. So I think we're looking at is that gap from one to five units? Because once you hit the six, you're a hotel or you're a motel. And then you're subject to a lot of different regulations that wouldn't apply to a short-term vacation rental.
Just don't name it the Hotel Cecil.
Andrew, start roll call. Call for, call for the question. Bear List. Hi, Vice Chair Lepper.
Hi.
Member Friend.
Hi.
Member Godberg.
Hi.
Member Kinney.
Hi.
All right. This and all decisions by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council within ten calendar days. Thank you, Ms. Lux, for your input tonight. Item number six, I've been waiting for this one. Election of Commissioner Officers for two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move a slate of Commissioners, Lepper for Chair, Commissioner Gottberg for Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
I'd like to, never mind, also move that nominations be closed.
How did you know I was considering donating you for vice chair, Mike?
Call the question.
Andrew, you do a roll call for us, please.
Member Friend.
Hi.
Chair List.
Hi.
Vice Chair Lepper.
Hi.
Member Godberg.
Hi.
Member Kinney.
Hi.
And Nicole, in all honesty, I had planned to ask you ahead of time if you would have comfort, but I think you'll do, you know, just outstanding.
All right. Item number seven. Amendment of the Planning Commission bylaws. Have you had time to read the bylaws or is there anything that we need to be, need to address tonight?
I just had one question about it and that has to do with the platform we're on right now, which is the Zoom and call-in platform. And I was wondering if staff has any information about whether call-ins and virtual watching will be available in our post-COVID times, if you will. I guess I'm just kind of wondering if we need to incorporate any sort of digital engagement details in the meeting details. That was pretty much the gist of it.
Yeah, I guess I'll jump in to respond from staff. Maybe Director Revoz might have more current information, but it's, it's the city's understanding, at least staff's understanding, that once the COVID emergency is no more, then the expectation is that meetings will be held back at Town Hall in a live format. And I, I am not aware, perhaps Director Revoz can correct me, but I don't believe there is any mechanism to, to have both forms of media or both forms of a call-in or, or video link to members of the public or members of the commission. Director Revoz, do you have anything to?
No, I would agree with everything you said, Mr. Painter. That's, that's right. Until, till the governor removes his emergency directive, we'll be probably continuing with Zoom. Hopefully, we'll be out of this emergency, we'll be out of the woods soon.
Right. Anything else about the bylaws?
That's a good question.
I just had a question related to Article Seven, Item D. Um, the sort of second sentence of that. So it's related to passing motions by a quorum. And the last sentence says the abstention of voting by any member shall not break the quorum. So I'm wondering if that allows, for instance, a two-vote or a one-vote yes with two abstentions or four abstentions to pass?
I, I believe that's true. I believe that, that is a possibility. Yes.
Okay.
I think that did happen with Christine and I and Barbara abstained, and we were the three quorum. If I'm correct remembering.
Right. We had a two-vote. We did have the majority.
If you didn't, if you had only, say, three, three members and two abstained, you would not have the majority of the voting members. So in that case, it would not pass. That, that, that's the first part of that. So you, in, if there was only three commissioners present, you have your quorum, but then one abstains, that's okay, right? You can have one abstention if, assuming two vote yes, but if you have two abstentions, then it can't pass. That's my reading of the bylaws. And, and that's, that's, that's a poor, in my personal opinion, it's, it's poor. I would rather see an item brought back if, if, if we have that few members and it looks like that, so.
Yeah, I, I do see member Friends' position here. If you read the first sentence of Article Seven D, it does stipulate that it's the affirmative votes of no less than the majority of the voting members, not the voting members that actually voted.
Right.
They're present, they just choose not to vote, I guess is another way of saying it.
Abstention is kind of a vote.
They just don't vote. Because technically, an abstention is not a vote. It's, it's not saying anything, really, but traditionally the members states, I abstain, but, I understand. I, I know, if I, if I can have the floor for one more minute, I, I know in the, in the near past, we've had some meetings where, under Article Ten, excuse me, the Article Nine, Order of Business, and under N, subsection N, Matters from Commission and Staff. I want to speak to specifically, I believe the last two or three meetings where that item has become kind of a rehash of other items on the agenda or actions taken previously in other meetings. And because this item has not been defined by the commission, I guess staff is suggesting that we perhaps put a definition of what this item is really for. I know Director Revoz and I have, have perhaps the suggestion of what it, its intent is, but really, these bylaws are yours. And so, uh, do you have anything to add, Director Revoz?
I do. Thank you. Staff has had a number of conversations with our city attorney. The issue we were seeing in past planning commission meetings was that basically this, this section is just to allow for reports by both commissioners and, and staff, not looking at any, not, not a discussion of future agenda items, not a discussion of past items that may have been discussed, basically not to invite for additional public discourse. We didn't want this to become or morph into what has happened in the recent past. It becomes another open forum, another public comment period. And so if, if the staff and the planning commissioners maintain you're just reporting on something or asking a question on the status of a project, there is no requirement then to open up the public hearing. And this, this particular item is not meant to invoke additional public comment.
I would appreciate that clarification, Pierre, because, yeah, it is very open-ended, and we have gotten ourselves in a situation where we had to reopen for public comment, and I'm not sure that that was, I don't want to say, I don't think it was appropriate. You always want to hear from the public, but we do need to establish, you know, some, the order and the intent. So I, I would appreciate, this is some draft language. I don't know if you have anything prepared for us right now, but perhaps at our next meeting, if you wanted to let us know a couple summaries to clarify what N, really, the intent of that is. I'd appreciate that.
Yes, we can certainly do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I support.
At the last meeting on this item caught me by surprise. I was, I was under the assumption that that was not privy to the public. So I, I agree, we need to, we need to kind of clean that up a little bit, so it is strictly between staff and commissioners.
My understanding that anything that's on the agenda, the public has a right to comment on it. I could be, I could be incorrect in that, but that is my understanding. To Commissioner Kinney, you know, a simple way to fix that might be to change the word matters to reports. So it reads reports from commissioners and staff. But assuming that we're, we're trying to move in a direction where there is just a discussion between staff and commissioners about things that are coming up or whatever, which would be reports, or, you know, I would like to ask them where the, I have a couple of questions, but I need to understand where then there would be a forum, what the appropriate forum is. If, for example, there were some things that came up in the historic review item that I, I had made notes on here that I actually wanted to bring up under Matters from Commissioners and Staff. And so if matters, if, if this isn't where you want that to happen, I need to know where we would do that. That's my question.
I, Michael, thank you for saying that. I had the same dilemma. I had some comments that we, we kind of closed off our discussions since the applicant is withdrawing and, you know, the whole project. But I did have some comments, and I thought that, you know, I would have a chance to, to speak to that later in this meeting. So, yeah, I, I am kind of a little, I, I felt like we didn't have a full discussion of that because of this particular situation. Doubt that that will come up in the future. And so if I, I'm thinking the answer is that the commissioners need to discuss that after we close the public hearing. But anyway, I just wanted to say that I, I too am looking for a place where we could have a little bit of a discussion of how the commissioners felt about the topic. So Pierre or Andrew, I don't know how you can help us out with that, but.
I guess I could, I'll, I'll attempt to comment. You can certainly have that discussion under the particular agendized item. And then the public also has the ability to weigh in, and there's nothing preventing for a short discussion even after you've actually had, had a motion, the second, second motion was taken. And then you have that other opportunity to discuss, but the public hearing is closed and you're taking your action. But to have a more full discussion on a more general issue, it may be something where maybe you want to consider having staff agendize that item at a future meeting. Because of course, if you are getting into a more general discussion of how you want to regulate buildings within the historic district, well, then that's something where we would want to hear from the public as well. So that the commission isn't then discussing something, something in the vacuum. And it's probably something that you shouldn't do if it's not on the agenda anyway. And so that's why that matters when the commissioners and staff is basically somebody went to a seminar and discusses a little bit about the seminar, or staff gives a report on we have certain items coming up, or that, that kind of, that kind of information does not require or open up the public comment. So when Commissioner Friend, Friend says that any item on the agenda requires public comment, well, that's, it's not meant to be, you know, the entire universe of everything that's on the agenda, such as, you know, taking roll call, or, you know, there's a lot of items on there where, no, there's no public comment on those items. And then again, you know, the public, I think, fully understands that the public is afforded the open forum, where they can come and speak to the commission on any item under the sun that may not be on the, on the agenda that they wish the commission then to consider.
Pierre, I actually.
I'd like to point out that in, I think I've been on the commission now six years, we've never had a public hearing in this section while we were live. The only time that has happened is when it's been on, on Zoom. Realize that at all the times we've sat there late at night, and we've had no public comment, anybody wanting to make a comment on anything we've said. So it, it seems to be the form that we are using at the present that has created this. When we get back to the live, I would assume we'll go back to the way we were.
Pierre, if I could comment on that, I would, I would certainly agree. You probably don't have the participation at the live meetings. Typically, there, there's nobody left at the end of the planning commission meetings. That's, I think, is probably one of the benefits of Zoom. It allows for greater public participation, and that's a good thing. And I can't recall what it was on that particular agenda item, the, the, the communications that sort of what was being discussed, it did allow the public should have had the ability to talk about it, and that's somewhere we don't want to go because it wasn't on the agenda to be a discussion item where you would open up the public hearing to begin with.
Right. So Pierre, that, that's actually the point I wanted to make. Let's say I bring up an item under Matters from Commissioner and Staff. I bring it up. It was never on the agenda. It was never agendized. So therefore, the public, in, in my view, and this is what I think maybe could go back to counsel, legal counsel, and the public doesn't have the right then to speak on something that wasn't on the agenda at this time. They have the right to do that under open forum, under public comment. But if we bring up something unanticipated, so for example, there, there are some things I'd like to bring, even if a member of the public brings up something under open forum, we don't speak to it then, but Matters from Commissioner and Staff is in fact our opportunity to say, earlier tonight, we heard blah, blah, blah. I'd like staff to consider, you know, have that discussion. Because that wasn't on our agenda, then the public doesn't get the right to speak to it. I, I believe that's really how we solve that. And, and so then we can keep Matters from Commissioner and Staff. I think it solves, you know, my concern and Commissioner Kinney's, at least for tonight, in terms of some things we'd like to talk about, but that's how we do it. It, it, it's not open to the public because the item was never on the agenda in the first place. That, that's, that's my thinking at this point.
Yes, and staff can certainly have another discussion with counsel, but, but I, but I would agree with you that if you're bringing up something that came up at open forum, and if it was the, the pleasure of the commission to direct staff, maybe to bring an item back for a full discussion, we can certainly do that. But there shouldn't be a discussion really of any depth of an item that's not on the agenda.
Agreed.
I have a question, and I agree with that. I think also we can just be aware, if we start talking too much about a topic in that Matters section, that clearly we, we want to have a larger discussion on it and sort of halt it there, and that would manage for allowing you to bring it up, but also not over discussing or potentially getting into a, a public comment situation. But the second question I had came from the public comment earlier about public comment on a, the consent calendar. Is that, do we open the consent calendar for public comment?
The member, the, the.
We should.
Sorry.
Yeah, we should.
Okay.
Yes, and that should occur before you take action on the consent, because it may be then the decision of the commission to pull the item.
Based on the public comment?
Based, based, based on public desire to discuss it. The commission can agree, pull it, and then we'll give a staff report on, on that item and treat it like it's a, a regular agendized item, not a consent.
Thank you.
Nine, Consent Calendar is nine F, and items of interest to the public is item an H. So it comes after the consent calendar.
But I think the, the question is, can a member of the public either pull an item for discussion or comment on any of the items in the consent calendar? And I think that's true. I know counsel does that all the time. There are members of the public that often pull an item because they want to discuss the item. And that's why we have subitem. Well, it's not numbered, but it would be if someone were to pull the item, it would be number four on tonight's agenda or any agenda. That would be the time in which a member of the public or a commission member could, could discuss it. The other thing I'd like to bring up.
Article, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
F, under the consent calendar. So, yes, we typically don't have anything controversial on our consent calendar, unlike the City Council. So really, that, I can't see it coming up, but we do allow the public to pull something for, for staff report and further discussion.
It could be minutes. Minutes would be the one thing I could see somebody saying, you know, that really isn't how that went down.
Sure. Now, if it, if it's the commission's purview, we could do away with the consent calendar as, as a concept and just do a line item of what those would normally be, one, two, and three.
I like being able to be, move things quickly. That gives us the opportunity to say, yeah. We never do it, but.
The other thing, I, I want to hearken back to what Chair List mentioned earlier. Yeah, my recollection is the, the reason people spoke in previous, I want to say it might have been the night, that long night we had for therapy stores, where a member of the public wasn't able because of Zoom. We didn't see their hand raised, or they weren't recognized, and so they really wanted to speak on the item. And that, that section of the, of the agenda kind of lent itself to that because they were commenting on a comment made by a, a member of the commission. And then they brought it up during, during their, during their speak. They, they kind of tied two or three items or two or three issues in their response to, in response to a, a member of the commission. I don't know if I make any sense, but I'll stop talking.
All right. Anything else in regards to the review of the bylaws?
Mr. List, do we need to take action? I had requested a clarifying statement. That's not really amending. Hell, it is amending the bylaws. Do we need to take action on that, or?
Can you make a motion, Commissioner Kinney? That would help.
All right, I will make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Friend. Make the motion that staff return to us with a clarifying. Make the motion that staff return to us with a clarifying language regarding Article nine and Matters from Commissioners and Staff of describing the topics that are appropriate for that.
I'll second the motion, but, and then ask that you possibly consider a friendly amendment. And that would be that staff return with clarifying language or provide an intent which may or may not require a redrafting of the way it's written.
Clarifying language on the intent. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? We have a roll call vote, Mr. Painter.
For the record, who seconded that motion?
I did.
Mr. Friend did.
Yes, sir.
Member Keeney.
Hi.
Member Friend.
Hi.
Chair List.
Hi.
Vice Chair Lepper.
Hi.
Member Gutberg.
Hi.
Any other comments or questions, concerns about the bylaws? All right. Now we come down to the one we were just discussing, Matters from Commissioners and Staff. Any comments or commissioners from staff?
Well, I want to let the commission know that we will have an agenda on April sixth. I had to look at the calendar. That's your first meeting. Interestingly enough, an application has been submitted for a request, a zoning interpretation for short-term rental allowances within the highway commercial zone. So that'll be one of the items to be heard on the sixth.
As well as the ordinance.
Information that we were to bring back to you regarding the bylaws.
Are you coming back with an ordinance based upon item?
Resolution, a resolution.
Resolution, okay. Resolution's coming back for that.
Now, my question is, would that resolution apply to that item on the agenda that night?
No.
The action taken tonight was specific to the CBD.
Right, okay. Anything else?
There possibly could be another item. We are very close to deeming, complete an application for a change of occupancy. I don't want to get too much into the description of the project, but it involves a, a new business in an existing building on Cold Springs, on, excuse me, Green Valley Road. But, so that item might be heard as well. That's all I have to announce. Director Rebus, do you have any information on? I, I know there's, there's been a court filing regarding a recent action taken by Planning Commission and City Council. Did you want to update the commission on that?
Yes, the city did, did receive a, a a court petition to challenge the city's approval of therapy stores. So we're working on that. We're putting together administrative record at the moment.
Okay. Anything else?
The only other thing that I want to just add is I want to both congratulate Nicole Gutberg for her appointment to the planning commission. Welcome. And congratulate Michael Friend for his return to the planning commission. Congratulations.
Very good.
Thank you, John, for leading us through Zoom as the chair this last year.
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of things I wanted to bring up very, very quickly, if I may.
Okay.
So it is true, as was pointed out in the meeting, that this body does sit as the Historic Advisory Committee. And that is a responsibility that, A, I believe what we can meet. But I think it's also appropriate for the commission to be given training and resources and perhaps a workshop, and perhaps Ms. Chapman might even be a good person to bring in to help with this, because it comes up all the time. In my interview for Planning Commission, it's one of the things I, I saw as, as a challenge, and I'd like to be able to address that challenge, and it, it can be very, very frustrating, and it's very, very important. So I'd like to see that happen. And that's kind of a shout out also to Barbara Rains. Plan to be consulting, because she is just a wealth of knowledge, and Barbara did a great job for us here on the commission. And welcome, Nicole. Fantastic to have you on, on the commission. And then lastly, if we could get a, any movement on the quick serve. Gas station. Do we have any movement on the quick serve?
I believe it was yes, yesterday. Yesterday, the property owner did come to City Hall. I did have a brief discussion with him. I echoed a letter that I sent to him regarding what transpired on the meeting where, where you had in essence, not approved the landscape plan as submitted and required the applicant to come back with, with a, a new plan, a clean plan, I think is the, the term, the motion maker ma- made. So I echoed that. I also echoed to him to, and to them, excuse me, to watch the video as I believe Member Keeney had mentioned during the discussion. So they were going to do that, and what they really came to me was how, how could they rectify the issue? I said, well, because that, that discussion talked about a lot of different things. And again, it was good advice by Member Keeney to, to suggest that those app, that applicant watched the video or listened to the video, listened to the audio of it, to gauge what the commission was concerned about and what perhaps they could come up with a plan to meet the city's needs in terms of code compliance, consistency with design guidelines, et cetera. So at this point, I do not have an ETA as to when they will respond.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I hereby adjourn this meeting. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.